I call this meeting to order of the Uba City Council. Do have a couple of things to read. Virtual information, the governor has declared a state of emergency to existing Californians as a result of the threat of COVID-19, AKA the coronavirus. The governor also issued Executive Order N-3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in this virtual meeting? This meeting is utilizing Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the questions and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the questions and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed, or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden?
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Espendola?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Here.
Right. Vice Mayor Shaw, would you mind leading us in vocation, please?
Not a problem. Please stand. Gracious heavenly Father, we just, we thank you for the opportunity that you've given each of us to represent the citizens here of our, of our great city. Father, I'm reminded at this time of year with the, the change in administrations, the MLK Day that we just celebrated, that you gave us a, a one commandment that we, we should do, and that was, love your neighbor. And Father, I just pray right now, as, as you've said in, in, in times of old, peace, be still. Let this nation prosper. Let this city prosper. Give us wisdom beyond our years, and we'll give you the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
Remain standing, please. Bob, would you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, our first item's the city attorney's report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Now we'll move on to agenda modifications or approval of the agenda? Any modifications? Not hearing any? Okay. We'll approve the agenda. Item number one, a retirement proclamation to Robert Myers, park maintenance worker number two. And I get to read this. All right. Congratulations to Robert Myers on his retirement after 30 years at the Parks and Recreation Department. Robert Myers began his career at the city as a park maintenance worker in May of 1990, and maintained the best parks in the Uba Sutter area. Yes, he did. Robert Myers possessed skills and expertise in all landscape and irrigation functions. He successfully obtained his certified pool and spa operator certificate and qualified pesticide applicator certificate. He spent a portion of his time assigned to the wastewater treatment plant, where his role was instrumental in beautifying the facility that received multiple praises. Robert was always a reliable, dedicated, and loyal employee of the city of Uba City Parks and Recreation Department, often driving the city bus for rec programs, day trips, levy tours, and visiting dignitaries. Robert participated in the annual Tree City USA event centered around educating the youth of Uba City about the importance of trees in our parks, schools, and community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the city of Uba City, and on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby commend Robert's outstanding and devoted service, and sincerely urge all residents of the city of Uba City to join with me in recognizing Mr. Robert Myers for all his contributions to the Uba City community for the past 30 years.
I appreciate the opportunity for these, working for the city of Uba City. I'm still getting phone calls about what needs to be done, so I will pass on any information I have to anybody that wants to call me. So, I still hold a license for the city for our pesticides and stuff, and hopefully I'm gonna drive the bus like some other people that retired did. So, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations, Bob. You deserve it. All right, item number two is COVID-19, discussion and action on measures to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 pandemic. This will be presented by Diana Langley, our interim city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So really not much to report tonight. We are still in the purple tier, the widespread tier, fortunately out of the regional stay-at-home order, but our numbers are such that we will probably continue to be in the purple tier for a while. So, any, any questions? All right. Thank you.
I think that's it? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Public comment?
Yes, thank you.
Have any public comments, Sierra?
No public comment.
All right. We'll have to get signals or something. Item number three, public communication, appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by mail, by email. Consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available inside our council chambers and in our Sutter Room. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one can be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium or from the Sutter Room. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Do we have any comments from the public? Not seeing any in the audience?
No public comment.
Okay. No public comments. Consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing nobody in the audience?
No public comment.
Nobody from the city clerk. All right. We do have a correction on item number four. It's the December 15 minutes. It was a regular slash special meeting that was called to order. With that, do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar or to remove any items from the council?
Through the mayor. Move to approve items four, five, and six on the consent calendar.
Second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, second by councilperson Harris. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Espendola?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye. Consent, consent, consent calendar is approved unanimously. Item number seven, final financial report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2020, and September 30, 2020 update. This will be presented by our finance director, Spencer Morrison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I will be providing a high-level overview of the financial activities for the general fund and both of the city's utility funds for 2019 and '20, and for the first quarter of 2020, 2021. I'm gonna keep it high level because I did, the information has not changed since I last talked about the 1920 results. Hasn't changed significantly from back in October. But I do feel that I do need to give you an update. The following slides will be for the, if I can go the right way. For the general fund, 2019, 2020 results. We do have, as a reminder, revenues did exceed expenditures by $2.5 million for an operating surplus. This was unexpected, given the, all the, the news we'd gotten about financials, the financial situation, a recession, all sorts of really dire news. However, our expenditures were curtailed, and we had some, quite a nice shop local movement, locally appears, with our auto dealers and some other local, local vendors, local businesses. We finished very close to what I reported to you back in October, like I said, with revenue slightly over budgets and expenditures. And expenditure savings were throughout most categories, with savings from salaries and benefits, mostly due to unfilled positions in police and public works, and savings in material supplies and services with big decreases in activity due to reduced hours worked during the closures, and savings in capital acquisitions entirely from police and fire grants that are still in progress. Savings occurred as city teams responded to the uncertainties of the ongoing pandemic, and I'll show you a breakdown of the savings by category in a later slide. On the revenue side, property tax was 1.6% over, over budget. Sales tax was 1.1% over budget. Business licenses were 26.8% over, over budget. I don't, I don't see a, a pattern that kind of explains that for me, other than maybe we budgeted just a little bit lower. And franchise fees were 3.9% over budget. Continuing with our top 10 largest revenues, hotels and motel surcharge, which we also call TOT more universally, was 13.2% under budget, which we expected as travel restrictions were in place for most companies, and, and a lot of people observed, were afraid to travel, or just were not going to travel. Many events were canceled at hotels. Building permits were over budget. We had a little bit of activity toward the end of the year, and police special revenues were about 2.6% over budget in 1920. CSAG fire contract, which is the fire service the Uba City provides outside the city limits, was 2.9% over budget. Recreation fees were 52.4% under budget due to the cancellation of many programs, and we did have some operating transfers that were close to budget. Now, the top 10 revenues totaled about 1, about 0.8% over budget. In this list of expenditure category savings, you can see that most everything, as we go down the list, there was a savings in most, in most lines. Heat and power and telephone were, were over. Some of the smaller lines, such as rental bids, can I do this? Rental, rentals of buildings and equipment and land, we just, we budgeted really low and received, you know, three times, roughly three times the amount we budgeted for 331%, but we're talking very small numbers here. And in some of the, some of the other categories that you'll see that we're at 100% are ones where they're more of an internal service fund, so we bill, it's, it's the finance department billing the department, so those are gonna be about 100% every time. As you can see, a lot of these expenditures were, were lower, much lower than, than budgeted, and so much of that was in it, in response to the pandemic and reduced activities and reduced service delivery. For the total at the bottom, sorry, I'm shooting around a piece of wood here. The total at the bottom was, the general fund expenditures ended about 92.2% of budget. The following slides are referencing the quarter, first fiscal year quarter for Uba City, ending September 30th. And while it looks like, we know what 1920 looks like, 2021 still has some unknowns. As Diana, as interim city manager Langley reported, we are, were able to, stay-at-home order's been lifted, but when we look at our local statistics, we're still in a pretty dire situation as far as the pandemic goes. And so we'll continue to monitor revenues and support council's vision as we discuss possible amendments at a future meeting. I just wanted to show you graphically the top 10 general fund revenues in the first quarter. It's, you would expect, I guess, just to divide the, the year, the budget in court into fourths, and say, well, we should be roughly around 25% in every category for expenditures and revenues, but isn't always the case just because of timing. For instance, property tax, we have a big goose egg here, because we don't receive our property taxes until around this area, right here, about the February, March range of, of 2021, of this, this calendar year. So, so some of these are gonna be, are gonna be blank, but just know that it's a timing difference, and we don't expect to see that there, we're having a problem. It's just the timing of, of when these revenues come in every year. Let's see. You can see that sales tax is, is approaching, this is for the first, for the first, like it's the first three months, and it's, it's approaching 25, but it's not quite there yet. The reason for that, I'll have to say, the reason for that is because we do, we accrue, we've only received, and I'll show this later, July through October in this, in this fiscal year. The, the May and June taxes were received this fiscal year, but accrued back to last fiscal year. And recreation programs, of course, was hit pretty hard. Sales tax, we do track 16 quarters of sales tax history, probably pretty small from the other side of the room, but I'll cut to the chase and just say that the 16-quarter average on a cash basis, what we actually received in, in payments from the state was 4.275%. And the four-quarter average was 4.5%, so the last four quarters, which would be October just through December of 19, to July and September of '20. And then on an adjusted basis, we're looking at 3.2% and 2.4% for the 16-quarter average and the four-quarter average. Still, so still an increase over prior years, we're still trending upward. And this, the difference between cash and adjusted is, on the adjusted basis, our consultant, our sales tax consultant, HDL, pulls out irregularities, and with the presumption that we're going to have to, either we received money that wasn't due to us, or we did not receive money that was due to us, and so they take those irregularities and they smooth them out, and tell us what we should have been if everything had gone well. When we don't receive money sometimes, or when we do receive money, sometimes it's because a company will double up on a payment for, for some reason, because maybe they missed a payment when they changed their permit number, or reorganized the business in some way. So, so it's not as simple for us as just looking at the cash that comes in. We have to analyze the, the quality of the figures, and then project what we're going to be getting forward based on adjustments. Continuing with the top 10 general fund revenues, the top, or the top general fund revenues, you can see hotel motel surcharge has not done well at all in the first quarter of the, the new fiscal year, but we wouldn't expect so either. Building permits has done very well, at about 59.5% of the, of the annual budget, and that's because we received a large receipt, a large permit receipt from the LDS Temple Project that's across the, the road from City Hall. And police special services are quite low, just because there have not been a lot of functions happening for them to, to charge and provide special services. And like, like blocking off streets, or keeping, keeping traffic control, I should say, is a good example of that. Business licenses are low, at only about 5.3%, but that is also because it's a, it's a timing thing. The, the licenses aren't due until later this month, and then there's still, there won't be penalties due until next month, and so it'll be when those penalties are, are, we're sending out penalty letters, like, you better pay your business, annual business license tax, or else there'll be penalties. That's when we start getting a rush of revenue coming in. On the expenditure side, salaries and benefits is just below the 25% you might expect, but a good portion of that could, is most likely because of some vacancies and because of, just because we're still in a pandemic response. In the first quarter, we were in varying degrees of being opened by department. And I have backed out, we're at 30, we were at 30.1% of budgeted amounts, but part of that on paper was because we pay our CalPERS unfunded actuary liability payment all at one time to, to gain a savings. And so we make that payment in July, and so it's, it's 12 months of payments all at one time, and that skews the expenditure. So I did back that number out, and we're, we're at about 20.5% of general fund salary paid compared to budget. Materials and supplies and services are about 18.3% compared to what we budgeted, and capital purchases is about 10.9% of what we budgeted. And capital purchases sometimes are pickup in the second half of the fiscal year, just because it takes a while to mobilize those purchases, contracts, designing. For instance, if we were gonna buy a utility bed truck with a lift on it, a man lift on it, sometimes it takes a year to get that ordered, and get that spec'd out and ordered. So, there's always, often a delay. The total general fund expenditures equal about 19.9% of the amount budgeted as of September 30th. So before I go on to utility funds, are there any questions from the dais that you'd like me to answer before we go on to utility?
Did we, did we lose Councilwoman Espendola for a bit?
I'm here.
Okay. Did you have any questions for Spencer Grace?
No, that's, the video went out for a little bit, so I'm trying to fix it.
Okay. Councilman Kirchner?
The video went out for five seconds for everyone, but we're back online now.
Okay. Councilman Kirchner, questions?
There I am, thanks.
Councilwoman Shaw? Or excuse me, Vice Mayor Shaw?
That's twice I've been demoted. Are they trying to tell me something? No, it's a couple of quick questions for you, Mr. Morrison. The, the first one is concerning sales tax. Everything else, I used to say it's timing issue, but the sales tax was a little higher first quarter of the fiscal year. Have we gotten any indication, because retail sales nationwide were down 4% during the Christmas holidays, while online sales were up, which affect the ratio we get? This was always the quarter that I was concerned about. Have we got any indication, or has CDFTA slowed down any payments at this point, because they had the hiccups over the last few years with all the changeover? Can you give me any insight on sales tax for this past quarter?
The one ending December 31st?
Correct.
I do not. I will not start receiving those payments for some time yet. The most recent payments that we've received are through October.
Right.
Yeah. So I don't, they're still calculating that, they're still receiving those monies, and I don't, I don't have anything yet for November, let alone December.
Okay. All right. Be looking forward to those. I, I knew that they would be coming out in the next couple of months here, but I, I didn't know if you had any insight from HDL as far as any indication of, yet, they're seeing anything from the state that they've kind of given you a, any indication, or we're still awaiting information?
We're still waiting. I do have a meeting, so HDL is still finishing the, the quarter that ended September 30th as well, so that'd be there. They call that the third quarter, because they're on a, sales tax with the state is generally on a, on a calendar year. And so I'll have a meeting with them the second week of February, and at that meeting, that's when I'll start saying like, hey, what are you hearing? Tell us, tell us what you know. But they, they spend quite a bit of time processing those adjustments and those abnormalities, and trying to get those smoothed out to know what we can expect, so we can budget it better.
Okay. I'll, thank you, I'll be looking forward to that. The other one was the slide you ran was salary and benefits. As you were talking, you kind of alluded to, we've, we've had savings because of COVID, but I just want to make sure that everyone's aware, who, the council took the position last year, that we didn't furlough people, we didn't do things as far as that for salary savings because of, of COVID. We've made, you know, had people work from home, do things, but the savings are from positions that didn't impact people that have been held and such, correct?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
And then some of that could be overtime, is when we're, in some of our response, there's been, there's been less overtime in some cases, and so there's some other factors, but vacant positions would probably be the biggest part of that.
Thank you. It was just a point of clarification to make sure that
Thank you.
we were there. Thank you.
I had my questions answered. Thank you.
Very good. So as we look at the utility funds again, these numbers have, have not changed really significantly since we last, since I last presented them to you. And as should mention, as part of the agenda packet, there is a comprehensive financial report on 1920 that we traditionally put out, and given there are no questions or, or changes requested by the council, I'll be putting that onto the finance department's website at ubacity.net shortly after this meeting, sometime this week. So you can see that the, the revenues for operating capital, operating capital in the water utility were a little less than, than we anticipated. Sometimes it's due to conservation. We, we had, we had a mild, you know, it could be a mild winter, or a mild spring, rather, so people aren't watering quite as, quite as, quite as soon. And it could be partially due to some delinquent bills that are out there. We do have delinquencies, as the governor did suspend the power of utility companies to use the shut-off tool for delinquents, to collect delinquencies. Next, there's state revolving fund surcharge, which pays back a loan that Hillcrest District took out to pay for water, connecting to the city water, was paid in full at 100.5%. Expenditures for the operating programs and capital programs and debt service were all down slightly. Debt service, I'm not so concerned about, because there's probably just a timing difference, but the, with the capital and operating programs, again, has a lot to do with, I'm sure, with, with response, and they're on the operating side with vacant positions. Debt coverage is something that we do spend a lot of time watching and making sure of, that the debt covered ratio here is shown in thousands of dollars. In the calculation, we take total revenues, including capital connections fee revenues, subtract operating expenses. subtract operating expenses to get the net revenues. This amount is then divided by the total debt service amount to get a ratio. For the city's bond covenants, which are the, the rules that we live by when we issue debt, it's the rules around the, the debt and the, what protects the bond buyers. This ratio must be maintained at a level of at least 1.2% or 120%. The city's ratio was fairly low back in 1617 at 1.61%, and then increased to a much healthier rate in 1718, about 2.14%, and 2.66 in 1819. The financial final ratios for 1920 is 2.36, so it's coming back down from 1718, but it's still well above the 1.2 or 120%. Wastewater's a little bit, little bit different. It's a, revenues came in at 100, almost 102% of what we budgeted. Capital is, capital connections are, are below budget at 70.6%. And those are the, the revenues we receive when we have, typically when we have development because they, people, that's the fees that we, we receive to tie into the city's wastewater system. The, on the expenditure side, the operating and capital program, capital equipment were down quite a bit, but that could just be that we didn't, we have yet to purchase that, those capital equipments, they could be encumbered in a PO. And in the operating program, it's the same as, same as any other, just during the pandemic, we maybe didn't fill as many positions as quickly as we'd like to. And capital improvement project contributions were right at, right at budget. In fact, the project expenditures for CIP was about 140% of budget, which means that we were working on getting projects done a little bit quicker than, than we budgeted. This is the wastewater debt coverage in thousands of dollars, at least the charts in thousands of dollars, the percentages are the percentages, and they have the same, the same ratio on the covenants of, of 1.2% of, of the, the debt to the, to the expenses. And so you do see that this, this ratio is, is declining here, and when I look at the debt, the debt payments are, are increasing, which is something that we know years in advance because we, the debt coverage, the debt payments are in a, in an amortized chart. In revenue, the, the debt is increasing about, increased about 73% over the four years, and revenue increased about 38% over the four years. And so, so that's, that kind of makes up that difference, that makes that ratio a little less, less favorable. Similar slides in the 2021, so this would be the July 1st through September 30 of the water fund. It's, it's very difficult to say, you know, which, what percent should we be at, but when you look at this SRF charge, which we, we are successful at, at billing and collecting, see we're at a perfect 25%, so that's a really regular steady stream revenue for us. Operating revenues are a little bit, a little bit higher, capital revenues a little bit lower, but that's very easy for those to be seasonal. On the expenditure side, you can see some really, really low numbers here. But again, that, that could be just some delay in, in bills coming in just because we're so early in the year and there's such a lag on invoices sometimes. And the wastewater fund is, is in a similar position. So moving on to, we, we do have, I'll remind everybody watching that we do have a budget ad hoc committee, and the city council formed this committee to look for opportunities to make recommendations on budget amendments and policy changes. I just wanted to give a little update, these, some of the things that they've completed, they have met, the, the committee has met with each department and reviewed department budgets line by line, identified account uses like professional service that were inconsistent, and will be working on those. Found a need for the pooled employee development, which is the former travel and training account to be reallocated back to departments, and found a need for more information on budget requests by departments, pandemic versus normal, normal operations. And these are all things that they will continue to evaluate and bring before to, bring forward to the, the council for decision at a later date, along with other, other recommendations. Currently, the, the committee is reviewing vacant positions. They did notice that recurring, reoccurring vacant positions one year longer may, may provide potential cost savings, and so we're looking deeper at that. They've asked directors to prioritize budget requests for further review and are reviewing costs to fully staff the fire department. Next steps. Be to, the committee wants to review the vehicle replacement plan, review the technology replacement plan, explore the possibility of having an equipment replacement plan, and finalize recommendations for council consideration. Did want to provide a, hopefully an easy to see or understand budget timeline. In the page three of the published operating budget, the, the city's operating budget for 2021, there is a, a calendar that's not quite graphical like this, but we're, we're approaching here where CIP will be, CIP requests and needs, which is capital improvement projects, will be developed and submitted by departments, and then we move into March, move into operating, the operating budgets, and then finance processes, the submissions in around April, and then around May, we have a study, budget study session, which is a public meeting, and then early June, early to mid-June budget adoption. And then around June, July, August, finance takes all the, the new recommendations and takes the budget and puts it into, builds a book out of it. And then the last step for us on the budget is to submit for national award and to distribute the budget books themselves. So that's the, that's the timeline that you can expect to see, and that timeline is relatively the same year after year after year. And with that, that is my orderly financial review, and I'm happy to field any questions.
Thank you, Spencer. Councilwoman, start with you.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I just have a general question for the budget ad hoc committee. Do you have a timeline on when you're considering reviewing those final steps? Do you have any date when that'll be completed for, for us to discuss as a council with some of your recommendations?
I would say that we were, we were thrown a bit of a curveball with COVID, and we've kind of held off on, on some meetings. I think we're getting, there were some other assignments for the folks that were on the ad hoc committee as well, that were taking some time. So I think with that off, off of our plate, we're going to be working closely with finance and get back after it. I know that there is some discussion about, that we're going to have to have as a council in regards to the budget process. What Spencer's outlined to you is a typical process. We may, we may do something or may suggest something different with the budget pending some COVID financial information as it becomes available. I can assure you that it is something that is definitely on our mind about getting back after, but I do not have a specific date for you at this time.
Okay. Thank you. I was just wondering because we have some future meetings and decisions that are going to need to be made, and I'm hoping that we can find a timeframe where the budget ad hoc completes, summarizes, and then we're able to take those recommendations and consider how those modifications would happen, or, you know, to accept or re, or refine or change to, to whatever the existing timeline is with the budget. But I appreciate the work, I recognize the delay, and I'm just hoping to get more like a, by the end of January, by the end of February, more closer timeline request.
If I had to look in a crystal ball to help you out, I would say it's probably going to be February before it's January. I would also mention that I don't think there will, at least for this coming year, I do not see that there will not be a budget ad hoc committee going forward. I think it's an appropriate and proper linkage between staff and the council, just to have continued dialogue in regards to, to the finances. I think it's worked well when the mayor Harris had, during his time as mayor, and Vice Mayor Shaw were on it, and I think it's been, at least in my opinion, it's been helpful for the vice mayor and myself over the last year. So I look forward to perhaps passing the baton to others who are on the council to sit on that ad hoc committee on a go-forward basis, but I do, my own one, one-person opinion is having a budget ad hoc committee makes continued sense.
Thank you, mayor.
Mr. Kirchner? Okay. I'm going to go with Mr. Harris. Okay? Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Spencer, thank you. I, I do want to mention that for Lynn Hale and Spencer and Diana, who's been in these budget ad hoc committees, it has been a, been a pleasure sitting with you and working through those. I know it's not easy, easy work, especially when you have folks firing all kinds of questions at you and, and you being relatively new in your position, but I think we've handled things well. I think the foundation set by, by Sean and Dave is good. I hope that Dave and I have taken it a little better and move it forward, and we'll continue to do so with your help and your assistance. But I do appreciate your time, staff's time, and being patient with our questions and our suggestions, and look forward to, to continuing to move forward as we develop this year's budget.
It's our pleasure. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
No public comment.
All right. Thank you. So we'll note and file the financial report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. Thank you, Spencer. Item number eight, approved development plan 20-03 to allow the construction of a 176-unit affordable housing apartment complex located at 470 Bernard Drive, assessors parcel number This will be presented by our Development Services Director, Ben Moody.
All right. So, good evening, mayor, members of the council. So the item before you is in regards to development plan 20-03 Richland Village Affordable Housing Complex. So this is a 176-unit apartment complex that's proposed for Bernard, 470 Bernard Drive. So just a visual here, this is, this is Garden Highway, this is the Richland Housing Complex in the back southeast corner of that complex up against the airport is where this is proposed. So this estate is, is proposed for 176 affordable housing apartment complex. It's composed of eight buildings, 88 one-bedroom, 44 two-bedroom, and 44 three-bedroom with approximately 2,800 square foot community center that goes into it. So the reason we're here before the city council tonight is per the city's planning entitlement process regarding development plans, when you get to a certain size, there's different thresholds where it comes to the planning commission, if it's less than 100 units, and then if we're more than 100 units, it comes to, it goes to the planning commission for recommendation, and then it comes to the city council. So in December, the planning commission reviewed this project and recommended 704 approval to the council. And so we're here tonight basically with the final decision with looking at the project for the development plan as far as does it fit the city's findings that we'll get into later as far as making the findings as the right fit for UBA City and how it's, how it's proposed. So here's a site plan. It's a little bit hard to see with the black and white, but basically Bernard Drive comes north and southbound, and then you have these eight buildings that are staggered back and forth, and then what, and then you see the community center up to the, to the right, to the east, and then what they, what we have here are these, we'll come back later, are basically contour lines that align with the airport as far as what the maximum building height is allowed under the airport planning with it being so close to the airport. And so here's a little color version to kind of highlight the, the different parcels that are going on. And so this is a land use map, so out of the general plan, and so what we have here is, is it shows this is a, is general plan medium-low density residential with a density range of six, the 14 units. So in the city's general plan, the, we've, where do I go? So this, this entire area i- is marked for medium to low density, medium to low density, six to 14 units per acre is what we're, what the overall density average is for that. And so in that area, it's, it's typically single-family duplexes, multifamily mobile home parks. The zoning for that location is R3, and so it's, it's a little, it's a little tricky when you look at it because we're basically saying, hey, we want medium density in here, but when you, when you look at our zoning map, you see the R3, which is basically a designation for the highest density allowed in our, in our zoning code to give that flexibility for apartment complex. And so what the area we're looking for here is, is, so with the apartment complex, the apartment complex, the apartment, the proposed apartment complex falls within our R3 zoning, but it's, it's, if you look at it on a per acre basis, it's over our land use, land use density under the general plan, but when we're taking a look at it, we'll get into it a little bit more, we're looking at the overall average for that complex to be within that six to 14 units. And so to add to this, there's recent state density bonus laws that have gone into effect with the housing crisis that allow, based on the affordability of the proposed complexes, that you could bump up the allowed density. And so with this being 100% affordable at the, at the proposed threshold, it allows for an 80% bonus in the density above the city's standard, and it allows for reduced parking. So here, here's a little flash of the airport comprehensive land use plan. It's an older document, 1994. It's just a relation that with it being so close to the airport, we circulated it to the plant, to the county and to the airport representative just to make sure everything, they were up to speed with it and didn't have any concerns with the proposed development or were meeting their needs. And so with that, there were some preliminary discussions about the hype, and no further comment was, was, was given. You know, and then going back to that a little bit, we'll see where the buildings are, when you go back to the buildings on the elevations, we'll see here where you'll see the, the heights staggered in order to meet those height requirements. So bordering information, the project site, it's right in the middle of that R3 zoning, and so you have R3 multiple family residential at the project site. To the north, you have, the north of the, so in this north area, you get into some, some CM heavy commercial, light industrial. To the west, I mean, really, you're in this, you're in this public, still regional housing authority area. And then we have M1 light industrial here. South, you have the M1 manufact, manufacturing, and then right now it's currently orchard, and then you have the airport in public to the east. Here's the elevations of the building. It's a contemporary design, brown, beige, green earth tones, horizontal siding helps reduce the mass of the building. And what I want to express, and the RHA's team is here with their architect, is that the city worked with this project, affordable housing is, is not affordable. this project, affordable housing is, is not affordable for, to be constructed with, with the many elements that go into it. And so there was a real effort not to be opulent, but at the same time not to be at a scale that, not to be at a level that is, it doesn't meet city's design standards and becomes something that's not valued. And so we worked with them to try to come up with valued engineering ideas with some of the siding options, some of the window treatments to try to put a little bit of love into the, the staircases and, and the, the architecture team could add to that to try to give it a little bit more pop and meet the city's standards but not be over the top. Here's a, elevation of the, the stepped buildings. And so what's going on here is with the building being close to the airport, they've staggered the stories in order to comply with the requirements. And so those are the eastern buildings. The, the buildings on the west, they'll be full height. And so then we have a community center as part of the, as part of the construction and requirement for open space and as part of the proposed development, they have a proposed community building that they could add to it, but it has a shared area plus a proposed office area that could be used. Okay, so get into the density here a little bit. So the R3 zoning under the city's code is, is standard for medium-density residential allows one unit per 1,500 square feet of lot based on the total square footage of the project site. So if you just went straight city standard code, they'd be able to build 146 units. But being able to use the California density bonus law with this exception to density, it's on a sliding scale, that allows it to bump up that 80, up to 80%, which would allow them to have almost close to 260, 270 spaces for that area. And so they're well within that density bonus law in California. Additionally, for the parking, California has basically said, if you qualify for this affordable housing and this density bonus, you could reduce, the, the city's current standard is one space per bedroom. You could bring that down to half a space or half, half a parking space per unit. And so what, what they're proposing with this design is 186 spaces. So every apartment complex would basically have one stall, plus there's some bike, biking in there. But, so with that, it's just, I want to be clear that they're well within the density bonus law of California, and they're real close to meeting the city's standard requirement. Bicycle parking. City standard for this would be 3% per our zoning code, which is six spaces approximately. What they're proposing is 84 spaces. So they're well within the bicycle parking. And then with that, there's also some bicycle storage on some real in-depth thought was put into the bike facilities in the locker so they wouldn't be having them hanging off the, the porches and, and being a certain, in a controlled area and then have access out to Garden Highway ultimately in the bike paths. Okay, so a traffic analysis was done. Long story, there was minimal impacts. And so no modifications to either steady intersection, Garden Highway and Percy or Miles or Samuel at Garden Highway. We looked at those two intersections and had them analyzed with the existing and proposed during peak hour traffic. And with that, there basically was negligible change. And so AM peak hour, basically what they're saying is we're having about 12 enter, 38 exit. PM peak hour, you're gonna have about 43 and 25. And so your level of service at those intersections right now is C, and it would remain at C at those intersections, which is basically the, the existing delay that's calculated at that facility. So environmental determination pursuant to SEQUA guidelines, the project's determined to be categorically exempt from environmental review. The project is consistent with applicable general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies as well as with applicable zoning designation regulations. The proposed development occurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres, substantially surrounded by urban uses. The project site has no value as habitat for endangered rare threatened species. Approval of the project will not result in the significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality or water quality, and the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. Through the city's municipal code and the entitlement process, there needs to be four findings. And these findings are that the site for the proposed use is adequate in size and shape to accommodate said use, public access, parking, loading, yards, landscaping, other features required by this chapter of the municipal code. The streets serving the site are adequate to carry the quantity of traffic generated by the proposed use. The site design and the size and design of the building will complement neighboring facilities, and the application satisfies at least one of the findings found in Title VI, Chapter IX of Article VI of the municipal code related to building outside of a floodplain. And so with that, I'm recommending tonight that you conduct a public hearing, then adopt a resolution of City Council of the City of Uba City approving development plan 20 dash 03 and associated SEQUA categorical exemption for the construction of 176-unit affordable housing apartment complex at 470 Bernard Drive. I'm happy to answer any questions. And also, the design team with Regional Housing Authority is here to help answer any questions about the project also.
All right. Any quick questions before we open the public hearing for Mr. Moody? Okay. Public hearing on development plan 20 dash 03, which will allow the construction of a 176-unit affordable housing complex located at 470 Bernard Drive is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment and state your name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
We do have one comment from, I'm not sure how to pronounce the name, but the question is, does this project require prevailing wage?
So yes, this project with it being, right now there is, the financing is not in position. So this project right now is in the entitlement phase. So it's being designed, it's getting, it's being improved, but currently my understanding is not financed as of now. And so with that, though, when it goes to construction, due to the proposed federal and state money being involved, it would require prevailing wage.
No additional public comment.
Okay. Wait a few seconds, just in case. Probably should be playing Jeopardy music or something.
Additional question from the same member of the public, is any prequal language? Not sure exactly. It seems, does that make sense to you? Prequalifying language, maybe?
So, so for tonight, just to be clear, tonight, the item is before City Council to determine that it's categorically exempt under SEQUA and that we're approving the design of the development. So we're not approving the contract specifications, we're not approving when it goes out to bid. We're setting a two-year timeframe that they need to start construction from this time that we're approving it without further extension. And so, you know, but as far as the contract specs, if the design team wants to add on to that.
Mr. Becerra or your team, any questions or any comments on that or an answer to that question?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I didn't quite get that second question. Got the first question regarding the prevailing wages, and Mr. Moody answered that correctly. Can you repeat the second question, Ben?
Gus, I think it's, he's asking if there's a prequalify, qualifying requirements in the contract specs.
In terms of subcontractors, I imagine is what they're asking, and no. I mean, at this point, we're so early in the, in the process that construction drawings are not completed as of the, as of this moment till we finance the deal. Once construction drawings are complete, then our general contractor will bid out the trades. Individually, there will be some payment and performance bonding requirements, as that is a requirement of our financing. But other than that, no, no, no prequalification is needed.
No additional public comment.
We'll wait a few seconds. Okay. Hearing no other questions or no further comment on this issue, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring the matter back to the council. Start with you, Mr. Harris.
You know, I don't have anything. I appreciate the information, and I also appreciate the, on behalf of the public, the clarification of what our purpose right here and now is, Ben, and I understand that. And I think it looks good. I think the, it's gonna help with arena numbers as well. Eventually, we get to the, the endpoint here. But it looks, I liked what you said, functional and nice, but not opulent. And I think it's important that we keep that in mind, particularly in projects like this, because they're definitely expensive enough as it is. So thank you very much. And I have no, I really have no specific questions at this point.
All right. Mr. Vice Mayor? Mr. Kirchner?
Um, yeah. Mr. Moody, I thought that was an excellent presentation. Thank you for that. Just a couple of clarifications. There was, you mentioned earlier that it, it is not on the floodplain. Is that, that's correct?
Correct. So a few, a few years back, interim City Manager Langley could probably articulate this better, but with the passage of SB 5 regarding 200-year flood levels being established in the urban area, and then also with the city participating in federal flood map requirements, the city needs, the city verifies that all development occurs outside the floodplain. And so in this area, in the majority of Uba City, we're protected by, we're outside the floodplain because we're protected by levees that have been improved to a level of standard. That's acceptable.
And secondly, this, this development is part of a community. There's, there's, essentially there's one way in and one way out, right, on, on Gray and, no, excuse me, Garden and Percy?
You know, I'd like to articulate that a little bit better. So with this project, it was routed through fire and discussed with the fire department, just to confirm how it was gonna be serviced. And so there's, there's gonna be two entrances and exits. But you're correct, into this overall complex, there, the main entrances are Garden Highway and Miles Percy, the main with the signal. And then up to the north, the Samuel Drive wraps around and comes back. And so to the project site, it was important to have two entrances, exits. And so with that, the main entrance is gonna be off Bernard, but there is also an entrance that's up here to the northeast that's been considered that will be part of the plan.
Thank you for that clarification. That it? Okay.
Hi.
Your turn.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I think the project is truly needed in this community, and is very difficult to, to build, as we know, and getting something going. The designs of the plans, I like the improvements. Ben, you've done a really good job of working with Gus Becerra to make some modifications to still meet those standards. I know that you've been working on this project for at least probably late November, early December to try to move this project along. So I applaud your work and, and the work with Gus. Gus, I have a question for you. In looking at this project, approving for, for us to move forward, and I'm glad that our Planning Commission has given us the, you know, the support in this, in order for you to get this going, you know, this is one small step towards that building, right? What do you, what's your plan on the finances of this project? Because we're looking at, I don't know, 30 to 40 million?
Yes, council member.
Hold on here for a second, please. Hold on. I believe that's item nine. We're getting a little ahead of ourselves here, which is discussing the funding for the project.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I didn't mean to get ahead of myself or ahead of the council, Mayor. I can, I can hold that question off for that item if you prefer.
That would be great.
Okay. Thank you so much for helping with that. So we'll wait for that question there, Gus. But I do like the design and the, the opportunity to have additional affordable housing and the community center, I think are all important. And, and the design looks really great. So thanks, Ben, for working with the Housing Authority on it and, and moving this actually quite quickly compared to, I think, what other community developments are doing in the, in the region. Can you confirm that, Gus, if our city, how responsive was our city with your project compared to other cities? And I'm not asking you to, you know, call out your other cities or other partners, but is there any comparison that we can learn from that?
Uh, Mr. Moody's been great. Him and his team have been excellent to work with. And I, I would say it's on par with most other cities and counties that we work with. But no, real, real good, real good response from Ben and his staff. Pleasure to work with them.
That's, that's the most neutral answer I've heard from you guys in a long time. Thank you. Okay. Appreciate it. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. The only question I have is one that I can continue to get whenever we talk about housing and whether it's residential housing or projects like this, is what are we considering affordable? And I know maybe that's a question above you, and maybe it is more to Mr. Becerra, but I, I, it's, and it's not pertinent to approval or denial of this project, but I'm just, I guess it's more of an informational thing. What, what are we classifying affordable now as far as affordable housing?
You know, really depends on the funding source, and I'll defer to Gus to get into the weeds on it. But depending on the funding source, if it's federal money, they'll have specific requirements depending on that type of money they want to give you. And then they will get into the percentage of the median income. And so, so this one, there, for this project, there was a break, breakdown about the 60% or less of the mean, mean income. And so Gus, please elaborate farther. So I, if, I, I mean, that's the, that's the for sure and certain. They, they base it off this mean income level, and then it sets a percent, percentage, and they're not market rate where it's just whatever the developer could rent it out for. It's, it's subsidized. But, but depending on the funding source, where the money comes from, the, the word affordable definitely gets, I think it's gray. It depends on what, you know, any sort of apartment complex that's, that's less than a house rental could be argued that it's affordable. But depending on that funding source and how that money is stipulated, it kind of sets what you could use and what, what the definition is.
Well, I know that we have something in the neighborhood of 300 other multifamily units potentially coming into the city. And I'm just wondering, as I, as I present that to the public, they ask me, are these affordable or not? And I, I don't know if they're gonna be affordable or not. Help me understand what affordable is. So these are being billed as affordable. Someone certainly should be able to say, what, what is affordable?
Well, it depends on what you're arguing for, right? And, and so the, you know, if you're arguing for arena numbers and, and what the city's mandate is, we're, we're saying everything in Uba City is affordable compared to San Francisco. But if, if you're taking in federal money, they have specific requirements regarding what is affordable for that.
Okay. I tried to get an answer. Thank you for trying to give me an answer. I, I do think the, the, the project looks good. I do appreciate the, the value engineering, especially compared to other projects that we've looked at. I think it's in a good spot. I think it's something that the, the city really needs. And with that, unless there are any other questions, I'll entertain And with that, um, unless there are any other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Through the mayor, if I may, one more com, one more comment.
Go ahead.
I think the affordable, the question affordability goes by not necessarily what it costs, obviously. Holy moly. But, um, I think the fact that the, the intended recipient, affordable for them, something that they can reasonably afford the rent payment based on their income and that rent to be a certain percentage or below of their income is the target. That's as close as I can get for it.
Becky and Gus are definitely the gurus. I don't know, Becky, do you have anything to add to that regarding the firm definition on affordable?
Nope.
I see Becky, but she's muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. Um, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As far as the definition of affordable, um, this project will serve families making a variety of income ranges, um, up to fifty or sixty percent of very median income. Right now, for Sutter County, a four-person household at fifty percent of AMI, as we refer to it, is at thirty-four thousand nine fifty per year. Those income limits do fluctuate on an annual basis, but that's where we're at currently for a fifty percent income limit.
Okay. That helps. Yeah. Thank you, Becky.
You're welcome.
Okay. Uh, I think, Councilwoman, I think you were getting ready to make a motion.
I was ready to move on the adoption of a resolution of the City Council of City, Uba City Approval of Development Plan D twenty dash O three and associated, uh, sequoia categorical exemption for the construction of a hundred and seventy-six unit affordable housing and apartment complex four seventy Bernard Drive, APN fifty-three dash four seventy dash zero nine one.
I will second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Espandola, second by Councilwoman Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? None noted. Unanimous approval of item eight. Moving to item number nine, Richland Village Affordable Housing, Regional Housing Authority Funding Request, and we get to hear from Mr. Moody again.
Okay, so, um, so same project. But with that, we're getting into the weeds a little bit regarding the funding for it. And so, um, as just discussed, Richland Village proposed a hundred and seventy-six unit apartment complex within the Regional Housing Authority-controlled property on Garden Highway, the southeast corner. So the estimated cost for this project is approximately sixty-six million dollars. So just, just as referenced before, the, the construction of affordable housing, um, is definitely not affordable. It's affordable for the end user is the intent, not for the construction of the project. And so, um, as the RHA's team will, will elaborate, the, um, the financing for these is, is usually takes years. It's convoluted with different funding sources from tax exemptions with, um, different state and federal monies that, that apply for them. And then, then the timeline on getting them built. And so with that, they're proposing this project, there was a little discussion about, um, separating this project into two phases to make it more feasible based on the allowable funding sources that they were going after for grant funding. And so with some recent changes with the federal stimulus package, they changed the IRS code to, um, modify the tax code for some of the equity and exemptions and, and please, RHA later elaborate. Um, but that allowed it to be more feasible to move forward with one phase. And so right now, they're looking to move forward with an application to the state for a one-phase project to build it all at once. Sixty-six million dollars, eight multi-unit buildings with a community center. And so here's a quick rundown. Basically, the construction contingency, it's around fifty-plus million dollars. The design engineering, a million. Expenses, fees, and other costs, around ten and a half million with developer costs at three point five. This is putting the average, the approximate unit cost at three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars per door. And so with that, they're, um, it's expensive, really expensive. And they're, and looking at it, and we looked at the state averages and what's going into that. And so the, um, the recently, um, constructed, the project that's in construction, New Haven, um, is, is a, is a low-income, um, multi-unit apartment complex right there at the corner of Percy and Garden Highway. It's around three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per unit. And since that was contracted, prices have continued to go up with the California city average, the California twenty nineteen average being almost four hundred and eighty thousand dollars per unit. And so as discussed, um, the affordable is really for the end users. And a portion of the higher costs for affordable housing are attributable, attributable to prevailing wage requirements, high construction material costs, owner contractors meeting federal and state requirements, anticipated time delays and costs associated with project financing. RHA reached out to us at the end of last year and, um, looked for support with financing this project. And so there's a gap between what can be, um, what they're, what they're looking for, asking for, and then, um, what to, to increase their competitiveness. And so, um, Gus, in, in his team could elaborate. I, I don't know if there's still a remaining gap with these changes in the federal stimulus that they need to have. And then, or is it just the request is based on, um, showing that local match to be as high as possible to be competitive? And so in order to finance Richland Village Development Project, RHA is applying through a competitive program, competitive program with the California Department of Housing and Community Development with the idea that the project is more competitive for available state and federal funding if the matching funds is higher. To provide those matching funds, RHA has requested aid from the city contingent on the successful application via funds from the city's low-mod income housing asset funds, homes-to-family capital and maintenance accounts, and funds to receive through the city's SB two permanent local housing, PLHA, as recently passed. RHA recognizes that, that this is a substantial request and respectfully will accept any amount the city council is willing to commit towards the project with the basis that the higher the funding, the, the higher the odds. And so the, the request has come in for a million dollars out of the city's low-mod income housing asset fund, two hundred thousand dollars from homes-to-family capital and maintenance accounts, and one million from SB two permanent local housing allocation. And so these funds, um, there's a history on them, um, quite a bit of a history that goes back to the redevelopment agency and how the city, um, purchase, used those RDA funds to purchase properties along Bridge Street. And so these nineteen homes were purchased along Bridge Street. And then basically when they were, when they were sold, when the, the road impact fees bought them to widen the road, the, um, the funds had to be paid back due to the stipulation with, um, being associated with affordable housing, low-income housing. And so right now, there's a, a balance of approximately one point one in the low-mod housing asset fund. And then homes-to-family capital and maintenance account, there's approximately three hundred thousand dollars, and that's set up by, off the rents. So when, when they pay the rents, um, it comes back into this fund, that goes to the maintenance and, and operation costs. SB two, that's a recent, um, new funding source. It's an annual funding source, approximately three hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year. That's coming through, that was established just this last year. Um, that's based on a fee. It's, it's a, um, it's a, it's a fee when we record a refinance. So it was, it's Senate Bill Two was signed into law, Governor Brown, September twenty-nine, twenty seventeen, took effect twenty eighteen. A seventy-dollar, seventy-five-dollar fee on certain real estate transaction documents when they are recorded and capped at two hundred and twenty-five dollars per transaction. And so with that, um, the state's been giving us a five-year projection, and that projection is, is a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Obviously, when that projection came out, it didn't have COVID lumped into that. And so we haven't quite seen what those numbers are going to turn out and materialize at. And then also with that, the city, um, anticipates retaining a five percent for administration of the funds. And so through past council action, we established a fifty-fifty where fifty percent of the money would go towards, um, affordable housing and then fifty percent towards homelessness needs, and that amount can be adjusted. Ten percent of it can be adjusted, um, at the council's direction. If we go more than ten percent, the council would have to approve it, and then we would resubmit our action plan to the state. So as discussed, the, um, I've, I've shown the requested amount and then the, um, the balance to the right. Um, at the bottom, the SP, PLHA SB two funding, it's, it's a little tricky where, um, basically it's showing those numbers based on the, the percentages that are in that balance. And again, this is an ongoing funding source, and so that's based off the five-year projection. And so the request amount would utilize the current majority of available low-mod housing asset funds. At the June fourth, twenty nineteen, council member, council meeting, council members expressed a willingness to reserve a balance in there for temporary housing needs associated with homelessness or any unplanned, um, needs. Regarding the homes-to-families funds, the RHA proposes to reduce the H two F fund to a level that will remain viable to manage the remaining nine homes in the program. And then again, with SB two PLHA money, that money was set at fifty percent. Um, we could adjust it up to six, up to sixty percent, ten percent adjustment, uh, per council direction. And further than that, we first have to go to the state for approval of the action plan, of their plan. And so some alternatives. And so one, one of the requirements based on the New Haven, one of the ideas that came up through the New Haven project was that um, discussion about the impact fees, you know, is there any flexibility on the impact fees and can they be reduced or not be reduced? And through that, they cannot be reduced, um, immediately at, at the dais. But, but what, but what I wanted to highlight here was that the city can require that the funds provided by the city be first applied towards city impact and development feeds that are established. The city impact fees for this project for a multifamily is approximately one point six million with the overall city fees, if you count sewer, water connection, um, you know, GIS, green building fees and the full works. It, it's close to a three and a half million dollar tag, price tag for the project. Regarding the duration of the commitment of funds, RHA is, is requesting that they run with the entitlement. So the entitlement is for two years. Um, the entire, after two years, with the council being the approving body for the development plan, they would need to put in a time. If it wasn't substantially commenced within that two-year period from approval today, then they would have to put in for a, a time extension and come back to the city council. And so with that, I'd also like to add that there has been some recent changes that the funding, which once with the original requirement for the funding, it was, it was a push to get it by February first. Recently, with some changes from the state and from COVID, my understanding is now been bumped as far back as May. And so there's a little time for consideration with this. And so with that, Luke Watkins, um, project developer with RHA is available to hand, help answer any questions regarding the project funding and, and myself. And with the staff report to add before I switch gears is that tonight, we're there's some time with new development that the requirement's not due until May. But with that, they're looking for, um, direction regarding the funding levels from which accounts and then a, a duration. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. So I, the first question I'm going to ask is just to confirm that we do have some time. One of the concerns I had, once this was on here, was that, uh, that we were moving awfully quickly for two point two million dollars, and it's, it's good to hear that maybe we have some time. If that's, if that's my first question, so we definitely have a few months, correct?
So I'm looking to RHA. Gus, my understanding is the NOFA currently is in the middle of February, but you received recent direction. It's May.
Uh, that's correct. Uh, Ben, and, uh, Mr. Mayor, the state has not even issued the NOFA yet for the AHSE program. Uh, what we're hearing is that it should come out late February with a, or mid to late February with a ninety-day turnaround for applications due, which, as you mentioned, Ben, put applications due in the middle to, uh, late May.
Okay, with that, then, um, I'm going to make a suggestion that, for consideration by the council is that, uh, we postpone this for a bit. I would love to continue to increase the relationship, not that it's poor now, but just get a little bit more information about this important project. In doing so, I think it would be important for us to either have a two-person committee, uh, which we will talk about in the next item, or to allow me to appoint, uh, an ad hoc committee to go meet with Mr. Becerra and his staff just to become a little bit more aware about what this project is and, and share with them some of the concerns, I think, that we have expressed in the past in regards to, uh, temporary housing money for homeless, et cetera. I'm not trying to forestall a discussion on this, but it just seems to me that, that this has happened quickly. You, sir, have been lauded for your quick action, which we certainly approve or applaud more than approve. But this is, this is two point two million dollars worth of money, and it seems like it's a, a pretty huge request coming in, in relatively two to three months. So, um, with that, uh, comment from the council.
You know, I agree with that. I was happy to hear that we had a delay because I too felt a little bit, uh, rushed, um, or it came, it came kind of suddenly, which I, again, we do appreciate, Ben, but two point two million, particularly when the requests are such a large percentage of the available funds. I want to weigh, weigh other options and see what other things we may have available out there, um, from other, um, also well-deserving applicants for consideration for the money. So we do have the time and I'd like to take advantage of that.
Mr. Moody, is there any downside to delaying this action?
So, not to my understanding. I, I know Gus's team will need a little time to package the application. And so I, I would assume that he'd like to know before May, but, um, but I'm sure we have a, a few months to, to work through it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor. Recognizing that this was coming potentially on the agenda, I, I have had some conversations in reference to these funds, and I guess your point is, is a good one. I get prior to deciding who the ad hoc may be, or we already have, uh, a good, in the next agenda item as well. What, Gus, who, what other, um, what other municipalities or other funding sources do you have lined up at this point?
Uh, yes, council member Espandola. I'd also like to introduce Mr. Luke Watkins, our developer partner, who's, um, on there, on, with us tonight. Uh, Mr. Watkins is with Sage Housing Group and has a lot of experience in developing affordable housing, uh, particularly AHSE funding. He's been able to use that on two different projects. I just wanted to introduce him. So to, to your question, um, council member, you could repeat your question?
So in, in, is this like, um, so this is funding, I guess, I, I'd just like to have more clarity on the funding source where you're going for this time, and do you have other commitments with other jurisdictions or other funding partners at, at this moment?
Sure. We've had a, a dialogue with, uh, Sutter County CAO, Mr. Steve Smith, uh, who is, uh, very interested in the project, and he communicated to us that he will be, uh, moving on the requests, our request to his Board of Supervisors, to the Board of Supervisors. The county's development impact fees, as calculated by Mr. Moody and his staff, are roughly around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So our request, uh, to Mr. Smith, um, to be presented to the Board of Supervisors is, uh, exactly what they did for the New Haven Core Project, and that was, uh, a full deferral of the entire amount of those fees for their consideration. So that dialogue is still happening. So that dialogue is still happening with Mr. Smith and so we'll report back once we hear what the outcome is on our request there. And then just some very preliminary conversations when I presented to the homeless consortium board, which you were present. You know, if there's any funding that the homeless consortium is looking at or planning at down the line, we would love to have discussions with that agency about any funding that could be committed to the project. And although Richland Village is not targeted towards homeless population like New Haven Core, here we're targeting our local workforce, our low-income families. It does not mean that a certain amount of units could not be set aside for homeless if the Sutter-Uba Homeless Consortium had some available funding to commit to the project. So, you know, other than the homeless consortium and the county, those are the only two agencies that we spoke to.
So then the funding source, the NOVA, the HCD, this is not like the New Haven funding because that was a different funding stream cycle, right? So this is a full, can you describe a little bit of that?
Correct. Correct. Now, Luke, why don't you elaborate on the AHSE funding and then the future low-income housing tax credits if AHSE was awarded?
Sure. You can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I've been working in this field for 35 years now, so I've done a number of projects. And the HSE funding is a source that is generated from the state's cap and trade program and a portion of the funding from the lottery sales for, you know, essentially pollution credits are set aside for various mitigation measures. And the affordable housing advocates identified that affordable housing would be one of those items that could mitigate pollution by locating housing near jobs. And the program combines this funding for housing with funding for transportation as well. So we have components that are required for public transit as well as active transit like bicycle lanes and other features. The, and there's a once-a-year cycle with this program and we're at the sixth cycle coming up. I've received three projects in previous cycles of about $60 million, I think, maybe that I've received to date. But this money then gets combined with what are called 4% tax credits and tax-exempt bonds and those are administered by the state treasurer's office. And, you know, you cobble together the funds and you hope that when the construction costs come in, it all works out. And as you all know, construction costs have been very high. Recently lumber was up 50% six months ago and I think it's gone down a little bit. But it's been a struggle in recent years to be able to finance these projects. So every little bit helps.
So it's a combination of all of that, receiving the grant funding within the cash to match and then to make competitive, to be competitive with the points in order to demonstrate that we have a fundable project, just for the clarity of, to make sure I got that.
Correct. Leveraging local resources is one of the scoring criteria in various competitions.
Mayor, I would be happy to have an ad hoc committee and thank you for answering the questions. And considering that our next item is the appointing of potential boards and committees, would I be getting ahead of myself and saying that the potential recommendation may be, you know, Sean and you as that ad hoc committee perhaps because your appointments on the board?
Yes.
So are you asking for, I mean, I'm recommending, if I can make a recommendation, to have an ad hoc committee and recommend you and Sean to be on that ad hoc committee to further discuss with Gus and his team if that's the decision or the course that we're moving forward.
Hold that thought. I believe Councilman, or, there you go.
Just call me Dave.
Vice Mayor Shaw had deferred his comments. I believe he wishes to speak, but hold that while you please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I agree with virtually everything that's been said thus far. I just want to bring up a few points that are troubling to me. Gus, first of all, thank you for bringing a project of this size to the council because I know that we've been at OT the last two years because of small-scope projects. I want something that can benefit more people, so I applaud you for your efforts on this. Given that we're looking at a state budget that has been projected with a deficit, the governor rolled that out recently. This is a bidding process that the bidding process hasn't started. We understand the mechanisms for the funding, the credits. This is the same dog and pony show that goes through every time we're trying to get these types of projects up. What troubles me is was running in at the last minute wanting basically 90-plus percent of our housing money as this is the only option that we have in front of us. So with that, and time being on our side, on the next agenda item, we already have two people that are set up. I would concur with Councilwoman Esmondola to let's handle that next agenda item, but let's get more concrete information. Let's get some understanding of the commitments from the other agencies because we've already heard a disparity of, disparity between the county and the city of $2 million to about $450,000. And this is all we've got. And I know there's other projects out there that are waiting to come forward and looking to come forward because I've had people recently reach out to myself wanting to do different things and I know that there'll be forthcoming discussions with probably our city manager to pave that way to see if there's anything there. So I'm really hesitant on committing that kind of money. So I would defer to you guys build those relationships, get us more information. We have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers and I want to know what I'm committing to for two years because the last project, Mr. Becerra took, it was five to 10 years for New Haven. I mean, it was a process and a process and a process, but we're looking at a long-term commitment and that's what troubled me. Like the project, we just got to figure out the financing and I'm not comfortable committing $2 million myself. So that's my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Esmondola, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to add earlier what I was saying, that I want to thank Ben Moody for really coming up with a well-thought-out plan and giving us something to really consider to help further develop affordable housing in our community. So Ben, your work is very, is acknowledged by how much effort and time you've really have put into this along with the housing authority staff. It is noticeable, so I'd just like to say that, okay? And I do recommend, I motion or recommend an ad hoc committee. And in that ad hoc committee for working on this project, I recommend Mayor Boomgarden and Councilman Harris. And with the recommendation, as Vice Mayor Shaw said, returning for either the first or second meeting in February of a regular council meeting.
Where's Shannon?
Yes, I just wanted to check, has this item been out to the public?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you.
A point of clarification, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
And this may be for Mr. Chaffin. Since you two are appointed to regional housing and the next agenda item, should that go through, is it really a necessity for appointing a separate ad hoc committee since you're already in that number 10?
Yes, it'll be necessary.
Okay.
Shannon, the other question before I go to the public for any comment is if we go ahead and approve the ad hoc committee to carry on additional conversation about an important project in the city, do we need to take any action on item number nine?
No, what you can do is you can just appoint an ad hoc committee, not take any action on number nine, and direct that the ad hoc committee or staff return it at a future date for additional consideration.
Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
No public comment.
No public comment. So I do have a existing motion out there, I believe, that considers myself and Councilman Harris for an ad hoc committee. I have a second for that?
One second.
Got a motion and a second for that? Shannon, we don't need to take a vote on an ad hoc committee, do we?
I would go ahead and take a vote, just so it's clear.
Okay. We have a motion by, I forget.
Councilwoman Esmondola.
Yes, Councilwoman Esmondola, thank you. No, I don't forget you, Grace, I just forgot the motion. And a second, and a second by Councilman, Councilmember Kirchner. All those in favor of establishing an ad hoc committee to continue dialogue with Richland Housing Authority on this very important project, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposition? None being heard, we will go ahead and establish an ad hoc committee. And for Mr. Becerra, Mr. Harris and myself will coordinate and it will be, it'll be an important meeting for us to get on the schedule with you. It's not, we'll get after this and I'm looking forward to it.
Likewise, Mr. Mayor. We'll get it on the calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Shannon? Just making sure procedurally we're okay on nine. Do I?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number 10, if you prefer.
All right. Number 10, appointments to the city council, regional boards and committees. I do want to share with you that this has been a challenging project and I want to acknowledge the efforts of staff. I know they've done some work on this and I know our city attorney and his office have done some work on this as well. And even as recently as tonight, there are still some things that are being discovered. And I'm hopeful that as we wrap this up, we can continue to move ahead. Selecting committee appointments are, is not an easy task. There are, all of us are qualified for any of the positions on here. It's just sorting through something that looks equitable, takes advantage of talent where it's available. And again, I think equity is a big thing. There's a couple of things I need to make mention of. And first I'm going to talk about is Gilseizer Drainage District. There was some initial information passed to me that indicated that the mayor could not be on the Gilseizer Drainage District. Come to find out that that is not necessarily the case. So the appointment list has been revised to include both myself and Councilman Kirchner for the Gilseizer Drainage District Board of Directors. As it's my understanding, the mayor has to be on that, on that district board of directors. The other one was we discovered that on the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, that the city manager by their rules or regs was to be appointed to the GSEC, I'll use the acronym. In doing some research, it certainly didn't appear that that was being carried out by all entities because there's quite a few different elected officials on GSEC, but in accordance with us trying to adhere to do the right thing per our city attorney, the city manager is the appointed person. But I am recommending and asking for approval when we approve the list or consider approving the list that Vice Mayor Shaw needs, that the city manager would appoint Vice Mayor Shaw to the GSEC. And the reason that this is important to our city is over the, over the past few years at least, there seems to, and I want to pick my words carefully here, the effort here is to link our local economic development commission with the Greater Sacramento Economic Commission. And I think having one person serve on both boards makes a lot of sense. There should be some linkages, there should be an ability to share information and improve communication, not only between the city council and these various boards, but just to make sure that there's an effort to link the efforts of both boards in the best interests of the citizens of Uba City. The final was one that came to Sierra and I about maybe two hours ago, and that's on the Regional Housing Authority. There is some ambiguity in the housing authority bylaws as to whether one or two council members can be appointed. I had appointed two. I had appointed Councilman Harris and myself. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to continue to recommend appointing two council members with the second person being appointed subject to confirmation of that seat and we'll be working with the Regional Housing Authority in regards to that. But that concludes my presentation. Be happy to entertain any questions, concerns, comments from the council.
Through the mayor, if I may?
Please.
Just wanted to quickly, having been there, acknowledge the effort that this took. So I appreciate the work and I think you made some good choices, some good decisions, clarified some things that had came up and I appreciate your effort. So thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah. Through the mayor, my sentiments exactly. I know how much work I've seen you put into this, trying to align everything strategically with the best interest of the city and opening up Pandora's box with all of this and fixing it. So as your wingman for the year, I appreciate you fixing it this year. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Through the mayor, I'd just like to echo what the vice mayor just said. I appreciate the time and work that this took. Just one question, information on when and where, moving forward on the committee assignments?
So my plan is to work with staff to address or make sure that all the different commissions know who their appointees are. There's already been a few confusion, confusion moments with who's going where. But after tonight's meeting, if we do approve this, then those things are, those appointments are in effect. And then for those of us who have been on committees and who aren't any longer on a committee, it's hoped that you will hand off any information to those that are taking your spot. And I know that interim city manager or myself would be happy to line out when those meetings are. And I know Sierra does a real good job and Judy of letting us know when those meetings are occurring.
Thank you, Mayor.
Through the mayor. Sierra's preparing letters to go out to all of the various entities on here to let them know who the assignments are. And then also Judy, for Councilman Kirchner, is preparing a list of the times and dates of the various meetings so that you have that together. If any other council members would like that, she could do that for you as well.
I will make a recommendation after having been a rookie myself one time, is pay attention to the Form 700 filings. Each, they're different, depending upon the committee that you're selected to, there are some requirements for political action forms, so. Councilmember Esmondola?
Through the mayor. What else can I say? The gentlemen have already said how hard you've worked for us in trying to do this in the most equitable way. I am, I'm truly excited about the idea, where is it? I lost it. Feather River Air Quality. So I'm going to, who was doing Feather River Air Quality before? Was that Mr. Cardoza?
Probably Manning, yeah.
So what are the things I've also learned in the last couple of years that I would request maybe we can consider a better process of transition, you know? So if we're moving out from one to the other, that maybe as a council, each of us can talk to each other a little bit about what we did on that committee if we're no longer on that committee. I just find it beneficial to do that. If any other council members find that need, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and... and share what I've learned, or been able to be part of in the last year, within some of those committee assignments.
I think that's a great, a great comment. I think the other thing that, that I would ask this council to do, is that when you go to one of these meetings that's representing us, is to carry the information back, and that can either be in writing and distributed through the city manager, or reported out during council reports and communications. I think sometimes things happen at meetings, and it may be another week or two before we get back here, and sometimes information that's discussed at these meetings isn't, you know, is not shared. I don't believe it's intentional by any means, I just think things happen. And these committees are doing, you know, some important work in our community, and it's important that, and I'm going to do my best, if I'm at LAFCO, which I'll report on later, to let you know what happened with LAFCO as it relates to the city of Yuba City. So if we can concentrate on some of that, on reports and communications, I think it would be helpful in communication, so.
And may I also add that when we are alternates, you and I have been alternates on committees, and we've been respectful about letting each other know, hey, can you cover for me if you're an alternate? That's really, works out really nicely if you're the primary, and you're not able to, and you know that you're not going to be able to make it. Giving some fair advance notice is really appreciated as well.
Yes, I agree. So I'm looking for approval.
Through the mayor. I move that we approve the appointments to city council regional committees, and in action to update, modify the composition, membership on committees.
Second?
Mr. Mayor?
I knew you were, I know, I know where you're coming from. Do we have any comments from the public on this item?
No public comment.
Is that it? Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve the appointments to the city council regional committees. And so can all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? None being heard, so we have the city council regional committees established, thank you. Item number 11, future agenda items. This is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to the council at a later date. Are there any, are there any of these future agenda items, Mr. Harris? Mr. Kirchner? Councilmember Escondola?
Just the regional housing authority, did we put a date on that one, Mayor?
I think Mr. Becerra and I were going to try to get it together and get it on a calendar, yes. He mentioned it in his comments.
Oh, okay. Do we know the date for a council meeting on that?
No, he, he said that the, according to the presentation by Mr. Moody, we have until May, so we'll try to get on the calendar and get it back as quickly as we can.
Okay, that's my only suggestion.
Okay. All right. I don't have anything. So reports in communications, Councilmember Escondola?
Thank you. Last council meeting, I didn't talk very much, so I guess I get to make up for last month. So committee assignment reports, the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, we had no meeting in January. The Gilseizer Drainage District Committee was council, meeting was counseled as well. The Regional Water Authority Board Meeting, that was an interesting meeting, I really actually enjoyed it. Diana Langley is the guru of water, and I'm so thankful, the She &amp; I are working together on this particular board. We were able to elect officers, nominate and elect officers, and we have an executive committee that has been established with the Water Authority Board, and it's quite a large board, there's over 60-plus members on this board. So as you can imagine, it is a four- to five-hour meeting, and some parts of the meeting in water do not even pertain to us, but we sit there quietly and listen, and find times where we speak in reference to our needs of the city. On the state committee assignments, on the League of City of Califor, the League of California Cities, I continue to be on the Revenue and Taxation Committee. We had a meeting last Friday, and are in the process of developing goals with a work plan, and we identified four specific goals. One is a secure state funding federal for local COVID-19 public health response and economic recovery for all. Number two, secure funding to increase the supply and affordability of housing and resources to assist at risk of or already experiencing homelessness while preserving local decision-making. Three, improve state local coordination and planning to strengthen community disaster preparedness, resiliency, and recovery. And four, protect and modernize critical infrastructure. I will forward on to you the work plan that has been recommended, so I'll send that, so you can take a look at it, and if you have any input, I'll send it to Diana, so if you have any input you can share with Diana, any thoughts on the work plan. Local community events, on Saturday, I believe it was Saturday, I participated on the 2021 Annual Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Virtual Celebration. I know Councilman Harris has participated in the past, and Mayor, and I believe Vice Mayor has also, the Unity March in Yuba Sutter, and so they held it this year virtually. And the theme was Legacy of the Dream. It was truly inspirational, they had over 40-plus participants in attendance, and it was wonderful to see that they carried on even in COVID-19 times. Finishing off, the 2020 Boards Commission assignments, my primary assignments were, as I mentioned, with Gilseizer Drainage District. Nothing really huge to report on that particular board, nor Sacramento Valley Integrated Regional Water Management Group. It's been tough, those meetings haven't really been consistently held because of COVID-19. I just reported on the Regional Water Authority, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency, there are several projects in the works, I can send, forward you all the different activities. And finishing with the Yuba Sutter Economic Development Corporation. The Yuba Sutter, the ad hoc committee, Yuba City and the Sutter Homeless Ad hoc Committee, we have not met on this committee for months. So I just want to share with our council members that we have had discussions as a council in reference to homeless issues, but as an ad hoc committee, it has been months since we met, and so there is no clarity to the future plans of the coordination of work that we've done with Sutter County. So my final comments, I do have a few words to say about what happened on January 6th on 2020, which was the violent riot at the Washington DC. Was a direct assault on the US Congress and the Capitol Building and our constitutional process. We mourn the deaths of two Capitol policemen and other, and other connected individuals. I support and I took the oath to defend the Constitution, the right to freedom of speech and assembly does not give anyone the right to resort to violence. I have said this before, I don't say it any time differently than I have before. And I welcome our president-elect Biden, and congratulate the first black Asian American woman to have been elected for Vice President of our nation, and it gives me great pride, because I know a lot of local community women are in support of this as well. As a nation, I hope that we can and find ways to resolve differences and come together for greater good of humanity and our country. And I am very thankful to work with a pair of council members, the mayor, vice mayor, and council, and council members that are always working with each other. We try to find the best solutions for our community and our city. It gives me honor to work alongside you, gentlemen, because I think we're a great example for others to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Yes, thank you. I've had actually, since our last meeting, a slow time due to holidays and COVID, and transitions of different boards and commissions, most, if not all of my, most of my meetings have been counseled or postponed, with the exception of SECOG. SECOG did have, it was a rather, a routine meeting, had a changing of the guard for several of the board members, as well as some appreciation for those who were departing and moving on. I have been asked by the Chair of SECOG to represent SECOG, and therefore us, at CalCOG. And so I'll be doing that if everything works out okay, and then I also, I, once I accepted that, I got the by-the-way, now I'm on the Strategic Planning Committee for SECOG. So that, that'll be fun. I do have a call by virtue of my position in SECOG with Senator Nielsen and a few other staff members down at SECOG, talking about our Green Means Go program through SECOG, which basically is a, a way of economic development, transportation-related development in our community, and basically, and regionally. Looking forward to that. I did do an AP interview regarding the, can't read my own writing, with basically, when the governor lifted the stay-at-home order in, in our region, it was, I did not read anything that was printed, but I did do that interview. That was essentially it. Like I said, everything else has been counseled, or wasn't held due to holidays. Tomorrow I do have another Yuba Sutter Arts and Culture meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Kirchner?
Through the mayor, thank you. Well, I've had a fun couple weeks in a month, meeting, meeting a lot of new people, some old, and trying to get their, their names and responsibilities straight. I'd like to start off with thanking Chief Landon, for taking time out of his day and getting a chance to meet his incredibly hard-working staff at the Yuba City Police Department. And also looking forward to meeting Chief Alexander face-to-face. We had a good talk over the phone. It goes on, Brad McIntyre, Park &amp; Recs, of course, Diana Langley, for taking her time out of her day, numerous times, to at least point me in the right direction, the folks at the wastewater treatment plant, the water plant, the corp yard, Spencer in finance. And then lastly, the hard-working people in the HR department. I look forward to working with all these people moving forward, and I appreciate them taking time out of their day to speak with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last meeting, I've been pretty quiet as far as committees and stuff. We've had ad hoc committees that I'm sure you're going to speak of, that we've worked on, and my work really fires up on Thursday. I think I have three committee meetings alone on Thursday, so last report back next time. Again, Bethel Ame Church, thank you for doing the MLK Day virtual. Grace, I was on there as well. Got there a little late and was there for the majority of it. It was glad to see our community come together, even virtually, with, with about 45 of us there online. So with that, I'll have more to report next time, Mr. Mayor.
All right. My turn. Quickly finding out that this mayor thing, that, that you guys have graciously bestowed on me is a very busy, busy thing. A lot of people want to talk, and I certainly welcome the opportunity to talk to them. Was on 93Q, talking about all the good things that the city's done, and has coming forward. It was requested by Bob Faschetti Fish, more of a discussion on, you know, what's going on good in the community. And we get bogged down, I think, at times, taking a look at, at everything COVID's brought to us, and all the, all the challenges, and, and so there's a lot of good things. Our staff is really doing a good job, and be refreshing that on February 2nd at the Government Affairs Committee for the Chamber of Commerce, where there's a meet the mayors, and I'm going to get 10 minutes to talk about how great Yuba City is, and our, our mayor to the, to the east, Chris Branscombe's going to get his 10 minutes. So I'm looking forward to talking all things good about the city of Yuba City. And I want to thank Diana and the staff for providing me with a lot of good updated information. Ben, you're in the room, I'll thank you as well, but those that aren't in the room, thank you. Chief Landon as well, thank you for the information. It's important for the public to know that life goes on, we're moving forward, and we're doing great things in the city of Yuba City. I did meet with Marnie Chambers, Marnie Sanders of the Chamber. I'd like to bring her into a meeting, probably in February, just to talk about all things Chamber of Commerce. She's a good partner of ours, she brought up some, some opportunities for us, and I think it would be great. So I will be working with her on a second, either February 2nd, or the second meeting in February. Also met with the Downtown Business Association reps in regards to their strategic planning. They've got some projects down there, and of course, they're, they're hoping that they can get the, the events going on back down there. There's more, more work to be done there. I think that one of the things that's happened, and sometimes being around for a while is a good thing, is that, that there's some confusion in regards to what the city's role is with the DBA, and what the DBA thinks the city's role with downtown on Pluma Street is, and, and having, having been with the city and involved with that at department head level, I, I've asked staff to do a little research and find out what agreements exist, and what responsibilities we have and don't have, just to kind of clear the air and get the communication where it needs to be, and if we need to help them with some things, consider that and, and move forward. So that was a good productive meeting. Also met with Joe Hale from Habitat for Humanity at his request. There's some things that they're looking to do in Yuba City that, that we had good dialogue about. He's a good guy, Habitat for Humanity and the coordinated entry and all that stuff that's going on, trying to take care of those folks who, who find themselves without a home, and they continue to do really good things. I'm looking forward to follow up some meetings with, with Joe. Master Tax Exchange Agreement, I mean, you've heard Vice Mayor and myself talk about this now for almost a year, and I really do think that we are quite close. I might even impose on Diana for just a quick time update, as to when we might consider bringing this to both the Board of Supervisors and our council.
So we are still finalizing the draft to provide to the counties. The city took the lead on preparing the agreement, and we're finalizing that, and then we'll be forwarding that to the county. County and county council will then need to review. I would anticipate some back and forth related to that. In my conversations with the county administrator, the discussion has been, my goal would be to bring it back to council the second meeting in February. I don't know if we'll get there, but that's the goal, because we do have an annexation application that's been submitted for the Bogstore Master Plan area.
Perfect segue into my meeting at LAFCO. Those meetings are continuing to happen by Zoom, but the, there is an annexation pending. Mr. Moody, maybe you want to let the council know a little bit about that one?
Yes, so the, the Newcomb Ranch is what, it's basically 748 housing units, southeast corner of Bogue and Highway 99. And so, it's a long time coming. So this project, it was discussed at LAFCO, and one of those critical next steps was the Master Tax Exchange Agreement. So thank you for the effort moving that project forward, because really that is the critical step to, with the, with the sphere of influence being adjusted, and all of the planning and environmental documents now being in place, with the Master Tax Exchange Agreement being in place, that will then allow the vote to occur on the, this new residential development and commercial project in southeast Yuba City. And so that has been a landowner request, 100%. And so that has been a landowner request, 100% landowner application currently how it stands. And so I'm working with LAFCO Executive Director John Benoit to work out some of the logistics of what he needs for the timelines, the public hearing, and then also if we're looking at fine tuning the annexation boundary or not. So, and that's looking forward to come back maybe as early as March.
So we got some good traction coming on, some opportunities to continue to move the city forward with both some residential and commercial growth. Thank you, Ben. I think that the last thing I'm going to talk about, and then I have an announcement, is that Councilmember Kirchner and I get to attend the League of California Cities New Mayors and New Council Members Conference coming up at the end of this week. And it's two days this week and two days next week. And I'm looking forward to hearing from the League of Cities. It's, as I'm sure Councilmember Espandola and I believe Councilmember Harris are both on League of City stuff, you know, doing all this stuff remote gets a little cumbersome. You miss out on some really good networking opportunities when you can get face-to-face. And I know that when we went down for our new members, it was good to make some really good connections with regional people, but we'll take what we can get here. I would like to finish, actually, I'm going to have two things. I'm going to read this statement, but then I also want to close the memory, or close this meeting in memory of David Gonzalez, and I'll mention that in a minute. This is on behalf of our entire city council and it has to do with the city manager. We are pleased to announce that after an extensive search and review of candidates for a permanent city manager position, the field has now been narrowed down to a single candidate subject to the appropriate background checks and contract negotiations. Once this process is concluded, we will announce the name of the candidate. We anticipated that the formal appointment of the new city manager could occur as early as our next council meeting, which is February 2nd. As I mentioned, I would like to close this meeting in memory of David Gonzalez, a very well-respected community giver in, in the Yuba City area. He, he along with several other longstanding leaders in the community have unfortunately passed in the past few months, but to the Gonzalez family, my condolences and thoughts. With that, we are going to reconvene our closed session. I've just got the nod from the city attorney, which is a good thing. And with that, we will go to closed session.